To make this press conference orderly and efficient, I'm going to lay out a brief agenda for this informational session and some ground rules. This might seem a little bit more complicated, but we were expecting, you know, a lot of people and cameras, obviously, so bear with me. First, the agenda. Our intention is for the press conference to be brief. Our scope here is limited. We are not directly involved in any criminal investigation and have no information associated with those investigations. Each commissioner will first have an opportunity to make a brief personal statement. I will then read the statement from the commissioners' release late last evening, going over our current status, and that will be the guide for what we will discuss as part of this press conference. The floor will then be open for questions. We will begin on my left, over here, and then work to the right. Everybody that wants to ask a question, raise their hand. We will go one at a time. You will be provided with a microphone if you so choose. Please clearly state your name, your city, state of origin, and whatever organization you may be representing. Please briefly ask your question, and I will respond on behalf of the commissioners, unless there is an item my colleagues wish to individually respond to. Once the question is made and answered, the microphone will be passed, if we're circulating it, to the next person who wants to pose a question. My assumption is, is that the folks in the media will not need a microphone, and we might just repeat whatever question you ask. This will continue until everyone has had a chance to ask a question. Once the room is covered, people will be allowed to ask follow-up questions in the same manner, so we'll just go in and around until it's done. Please abide by the following rules, and that includes everybody in the audience. Please be respectful of us and everyone's time. Do not call out questions or make comments while others are speaking. Everyone who wants to speak will be afforded an opportunity to speak here. Everyone with a question will be allowed to ask a question. Please keep any questions or comments brief, so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. And two, the commissioners will not discuss anything related to the criminal investigation into this matter. Please do not repeatedly ask the same or similar questions. Once the commissioners have responded, then an item is related to the criminal investigation. We thank you for your time and willingness to come here to the press conference and participate in this event. And with that, I'm going to turn it back to the commissioners, so that they have an opportunity to give their personal statements.
Thank you, Jeff. As chairman, and on a very personal note, needless to say, this is a very sad and unfortunate situation. I take my role as commissioner very seriously, and this is not reflective of my personal passion to act in always in a manner of what's best for the residents in this community. In that regard, I apologize for this terrible situation. This is not something I ever imagined occurring as part of my role as commissioner. As the other commissioners will share, we've been fully cooperative and responsive in the commissioner's role in support of all activities, large and small, associated with seeing this person apprehended as quickly as possible. Thank you.
I'm Ben Caffelin, vice chair of commissioners. The commissioners have not said a lot yet about the events over at the jail, and that's because of the ongoing investigations. But it's now time for us to address the residents of Warren County. You are right to expect that when someone is charged and confined in our jail, that they will remain there. And so as a citizen, as a neighbor, even as a husband and a father, that's an expectation that I share. And it's part of that foundational trust, the sacred trust, that we've been given as elected officials. Normally, Warren County is known as an awesome place to work, live, and play, but it's now been five and a half days since an inmate escaped the Warren County Jail. Five days now that have caused fear and anxiety to ripple throughout Warren County and the region. And it's resulted in the national spotlight being put on Warren County for a bad reason. So, to the people of this community, let me express my personal regret that this happened. Let me say that I am so sorry for the sleepless nights that we've all experienced and the cloud of uncertainty that is yet to give way to answers. I'm personally very sorry that this man escaped from our custody. To the local, state, and federal law enforcement agents who have so diligently been pursuing this man, thank you. Thank you for taking the time away from your own families. Thank you for pursuing this man in an unprecedented manhunt with little or no rest. I am very grateful for each one of you. Everyone is a stakeholder in this manhunt, and we all want to know exactly what happened, but for now, to protect the integrity of the ongoing criminal investigation, those details must wait. Be assured that Warren County is conducting a rigorous internal investigation. We're reviewing every second of video surveillance, taking statements, reviewing timestamps, tag-out sheets, and interviewing every individual who may have information, whether they're inside or outside the jail. We're not on a witch hunt, but we are going to seek justice, including if that means with our employees. At the same time, while transparency is, of course, our guiding principle, the law requires us to keep disciplinary actions confidential. We will follow that law, and so any disciplinary action very likely will not come before the public. Let me close by saying that every county employee is in this with you. None of us have been unaffected, but our professional staff has risen to the challenge. We are resolved that we will, after this event, be stronger, better, and a more effective team. The safety of our staff, the inmates, and of course, the public is our utmost concern. So here's my challenge to you. Refrain from speculation and second guessing. Stay alert. Report credible and serious leads to the state police and follow their advisories, but most importantly, don't lose heart. Thank you.
I do not have a personal statement at this time, because then I'll be doing enough talking for everybody. So first, I'm going to read the statement that has been circulated, which is the press release from last night, and then once we conclude that, we'll be doing the Q and A. The Warren County Board of Commissioners, in conjunction with the prison board, have met and reviewed data associated with the escape of Michael Burham on Thursday, July 6th, and have prepared a statement related to the next steps in addressing jail security, supporting Warren County's corrections officers, and the review of jail policies and procedures. Multiple law enforcement agencies are conducting criminal investigations related to the escape, which has slowed our ability to provide information or react to policy and facility concerns. The commissioners and prison board's goal is to support all investigations into the escape and see that they come to a complete conclusion. As the criminal investigation concludes, the prison board and commissioners' immediate focus is their responsibility to the county jail, its staff, the inmates in their care, and the community's safety. The city of Warren Police are conducting a criminal investigation into the escape, but neither they nor city administration have any management responsibility to the Warren County Jail. That rests entirely on the prison board and the county commissioners. In the aftermath of the escape on Thursday, the prison board and commissioners have met and reviewed all available information not directly involved with any criminal investigation. That review has led to the order of repairs on the roof of the prison yard, which is a forty-by-forty room, and that's a rough number, forty-by-forty room with a cage on the top floor of the jail facility. The commissioners and prison board have also ordered the space be augmented with deterrents and safety measures, and that the exercise equipment be removed and replaced with equipment that does not provide access to higher elevations in the facility. The commissioners expect the immediate structural fixes to be completed before the end of the week. Several longer-term upgrades will begin immediately and be completed in the next few weeks. All policies and procedures related to inmate access and observation are being reviewed, and changes will be made to increase security in that space. It's important to understand that the law has changed in the past five years, and prisoners must have access to yard time and outside exercise. With a facility as small as ours, that is many times close to full, inmates will be taken to the yard in shifts. That happens all day and evening to ensure that all inmates have appropriate yard time. Therefore, inmates are legally required to access the yard, and it is crucial for the prison board to ensure the facility is secure. The prison board and commissioners will have an ongoing review of the policy, staff, and structures in the prison, and intend to continue releasing information on future changes and improvements. It's important to know that the commissioners and prison board support the jail staff who did all they could when the alert of Burham's escape was made. The prison staff has worked tirelessly to collaborate with local and regional law enforcement to assist with all investigations, and they are to be commended for their efforts. Although the commissioners await the outcome of the criminal investigation for any notice of internal staff issues, the board is confident in the administration and workers and their overall commitment to the security of the facility. Working in the jail is a challenging job. The commissioners and prison board support the Warren County corrections officers. In the short term, on the request of the Warren County District Attorney, Rob Green, the prison board and commissioners will potentially be working with the Pennsylvania State Department of Corrections to thoroughly evaluate the facility and its policies, to find weaknesses, and recommend improvements. On Wednesday, today, July 12th, at our regular noon meeting, and it was going to be the Jackson courtroom, but we needed a bigger space, at the Warren County Courthouse, the commissioners will review and vote on a potential contract with P A DOC to fully investigate the Warren County prison. It's important to note that this is an added measure as P A DOC inspects the facility annually. At this meeting, the commissioners will conduct a brief press conference, which is what we're at. The commissioners and prison board pray for a quick end to the search for Michael Burham and the safety of the community, and will continue to move forward with improving security and safety at Warren County Jail. So that's the statement that we made yesterday. At this time, I would open the floor for questions, and we'll start here on the left and then work our way to the right.
Sorry, it can be eerie news now. Simply put, who bears the blame? Who bears responsibility? Is it guards who let him get to the roof? Is it the prison board? Somebody messed up? Who's responsible?
I think that that's something that's going to continue to be examined as we evaluate the situation, and I think that as time goes on and the criminal investigation completes, more will be revealed as far as all of the various logistics associated with what you're asking.
Hi. Can you explain the top of the jail? What does that look like, and is that where they're allowed to go out into the yard?
Yeah, so similar to what's stated in the press release, essentially, it's a box that is on the top level of the jail. The roof, there is a square hole in it that has a chain-link fence on top of steel girders on top of it. And a small portion of it, there are pieces that hold that fence down. Those were broken, and so that was the hole that allowed him to escape through the roof.
Hey, Jeff. You guys have expressed confidence in the jail staff and stuff. Where does that confidence come from, especially considering the nature of the escape of Michael Burham?
I think that there's a, so there's a couple of different things to discuss. The first is, as soon as this happened, obviously, there's a lot of social media, you know, kind of, the people trying to figure out what happened. And so there's a lot of like negative stuff that ends up getting thrown out about what could have potentially happened. And so the COs end up seeing that, they're very upset about the situation, and so on our end, we want to show support for them, because regardless of how the criminal investigation comes out, we feel very confident that our staff is top of the line and has been. And whether it's the reviews from the state show that, our own evaluations show that, you know, the criminal investigation might show that there's an issue with one or two of them. We can't say that for certain, but everybody else that's involved is top of the line. And secondly, I would say that's also shown in the response. The second that that announcement came out that he left, everybody reported to the jail within minutes. You know, everybody. And immediately started collaborating with the state police and everybody involved. And their response has been fantastic. Most of those people have not slept. They have tried everything they can, because their number-one priority is getting Michael Burham back in custody. Let's see.
Alex, we're here at E C News, Commissioner Elston. You had mentioned that the county IT handles the security cameras on the outside of the jail. Trying to get some understanding. What happened Thursday night that had that gap of sixty to ninety minutes in police officers getting footage to understand where Burham had gone?
Well, I think that, first of all, that is directly related to the investigation. So I'll just say that. Like, all of the footage-related stuff, that involves the investigation. The second thing I would say is, is that we do not have people escape from the jail on a regular basis. And so that's why every moment of everything that happened after he escaped is being reviewed, so that we can make sure that all of those things get buckled down and taken care of if there is a deficiency.
But isn't that an deficiency if there is a gap in security coverage or being able to retrieve that coverage?
I think that there's a possibility that there'd be a larger discussion about what you're talking about as the criminal investigation finishes, about the details that you're asking for.
Are you looking at retooling your camera system?
I think that every aspect of the jail's security, certainly at the top, is being evaluated, including the cameras. So if there are gaps, they will be corrected.
Riley Douglas, with News 4 Buffalo. Could this criminal investigation lead to charges of people in charge of the prison? Or are you just expecting it to lead to maybe layoffs or anything like that?
All of that's a possibility. I can't speak to any of it in detail. I can say that, you know, as this moves forward, more will be shared with the public. Part of the reason that we're, you know, to lack a better term, cagey on responding to media requests for film footage and other things is, is we do not want to interfere with the investigation that's happening. We could be, we could get in trouble for that. So we're trusting the attorneys and the DA and the people that are involved, that are part of the investigation, to instruct us on what we should be releasing to the public. Nobody here has any issue with transparency. It's just a matter of, we want to make sure that we're doing everything by the book. And I think that all of that will come out as time moves forward.
According to the observation, you mentioned that there was a break in the fence that allowed him to escape.
In the chain-link fence on the roof, there was, it's connected to the beams. A couple of those broke, and that's how he crawled out.
So when was the last time that space was evaluated for any breaks or any possibilities for anyone to escape?
Yeah, I mean, we review the facility on a regular basis, and again, I think that that type of information is stuff that's going to come out as part of the, like, ongoing criminal investigation.
How often is there a regular basis?
Well, there's the annual review by P A DOC. There's the reviews that we have in the roof itself, associated with its structural integrity. So just within the past few months, we've been going through, we're planning to do a renovation of the roof, so all of that's been evaluated. I can't speak to how often people go and pull the cage up, you know, to determine if there's any breaks in it. That's part of those ongoing annual reviews of the facility.
So you were planning on doing the roof in the last few months. Do you advise you that that was there, that there were problems?
I can't speak to that, because again, that goes back to the investigation piece, but I think that that's something that will be addressed very soon.
I believe Buffalo, Seventh News Buffalo. How concerned are you of an inside situation? You mentioned that disciplinary actions wouldn't be made public. Why wouldn't they be made public?
I think that, again, this is another situation where more will be revealed as time goes on. All of those things are part of the criminal investigations. Everyone is being evaluated as a part of that, and so there's a very real possibility that any number of people could be charged with something. We can't discuss any of that at this time, like, but when that, when and if any of that becomes an issue, that's something that will be released to the public.
You've seen the cotton foxes. You mentioned immediate structural changes. Have there been any, has the board given any guidance to jail staff, correction officers, immediate changes for them to make about how they move throughout the jail? Have they watched the inmates?
Yeah, so, I mean, the minute that Michael Burham escaped, obviously, the situation changed in the jail. It went through a period of lockdown. Areas of the facility were, you know, off limits. So, and I can tell you that the jail administration obviously is very committed to making sure that there aren't any further issues, so all of those things are being addressed. So there are definitely changes that are being made in real time in order to make sure that there aren't any other issues. Hope that answers it.
With Mr. Burham being an obvious white risk, shouldn't he have been watched more closely out there?
Again, that's something that's a part of the investigation. I don't know that I have an answer for that.
Can you give us some idea logistics-wise? What your staffing is, what your budget is for the prison here, and is this part of this review that you're going to do with the State Department of Corrections? Will you look at the, say, the level of crime that the individual has committed to determine if they should be in your facility or perhaps in another security facility that may have more in terms of security and staff?
Yeah. So a couple of points, I guess, that are associated with some of the other questions. The first one is, there are a couple of different types of jail facilities. Some of them are, and you might, guys, remember the term. I'm drawing a blank on it right now, but you basically either have a facility where the guards are mixed in with the inmates, and they watch them. They're in the room with them. Or you have a facility where there's remote viewing. So they're locked in a space, and someone through a camera watches them, what they're doing. One of the questions has always been, he's on the roof with three other people, who is watching him? Okay? We all, every time people go up there, they're watched through a camera remotely by somebody. Okay? And the amount of time that he got out of that roof was quicker than anybody could respond to get inside the room. Okay? So in order to change that, we would have to completely reconfigure the jail in order to make that happen. Like, because like, for instance, in Erie, they have a situation where they have inmates or they have guards that are mixed in with the inmates, and they watch them on a regular basis. Our facility is a box with a whole ton of rooms in it, and they all have cameras in them. We would have to completely reconfigure the jail and triple our staff in order to do some of the stuff that people have suggested as a remedy. The fundamental problem is, is that there was a structural weakness in the cage on the roof. That's it, as far as the facility goes. If that had been, if that hadn't been the case, you wouldn't be here, and we wouldn't be having this conversation, so.
I guess I would say, just some other facilities, as you're saying, guards are mixed in.
Yep.
Knowing this individual's proclivity to escape, knowing the level of crimes that he committed, is that something you can have a discussion with, with the state and saying, why is he assigned here? Should he be assigned here?
So specifically answering that question, our job is to manage the jail. We do not determine a hundred percent who comes into it or who leaves. That's the courts, that's the law enforcement agencies, so that would be a question for them.
But is it something you will bring up in light of what happened here?
I'm sure that everybody will be discussing that, at every level going forward. Absolutely.
Ben, Dr. Fox, if I'm understanding correctly, you're saying that the room was in lock, so no officers could get in quick enough to stop his escape?
In the time that it took him to get out, yes.
If they were watching him on camera, would they say, no, he was outside, and then they run outside the door and stop him?
I understand what you're getting at. There is a period of time that it takes to get out of the room, get around the building, and then address him as he gets on the other side. The time-
Did other officers, that he was being able to detect about what happened?
Everybody responded as quickly as they possibly could, given the circumstances.
And in two minutes, two minutes response?
Well, that's the people that were coming from outside the facility. Okay, so, oh, sorry. We're going right.
Josh Cotton, Times Observer.
Yep.
I want to make, I understood you a minute ago. You said that the investigation might show there's an issue with the one or two of them when you were saying the staff.
That's stating speculatively, like.
Also, just procedurally, is the jail still on lockdown?
It is not.
So for families in the community, visits, those kinds of things are starting to happen again?
I can't speak, I'm not, Rusty would be better to answer that question, but I would say, I'm not sure about family visits, but we are taking new inmates.
Okay.
Is the jail for mostly low-level offenders or what type? I remember trying to describe the type of facility.
Yeah, so we're a county prison. The maximum sentence anyone can have is two years, and then everybody else is unsentenced, and they're going to be transferred someplace else, or they're going to be sentenced and then spend whatever time they have in that jail.
Okay. Sarah Boxer from CNN. I wanted to follow up on a timeline question.
Yep.
You said two-minute response for people from the outside. How quickly did anyone inside the building or who was actually watching the cameras realize what was going on?
Yeah, I mean, everybody knew immediately. I think the question of how quickly everybody responded within the facility, that'll be something that I think, again, will be revealed more so as the investigation moves forward, but it was very quick. I, you know, I can't stress enough that this person moved up through the roof very quickly, ran to the other end, got down the rope, and got out.
Also, that had the rope up. Like, did he bring the rope up there or?
I can't speak to that. That's part of the investigation.
And then was there any kind of-
So I apologize. You've had like five questions. We're-
Just wondering, was there an alarm or anything that went off?
Yeah.
Or any thing that flared on the cameras? Like, how did anyone know that he had escaped?
The prison has an alert system, so they alerted each other as soon as they knew that he was, that he had escaped.
Sure, I just want to clarify a few things you said. Is it correct that then no one was in the yard, no guard was in the yard? That he was on the roof with three other people, presumably three other inmates? Is that accurate?
So he was in the cage, the caged yard, okay? This is one of the confusing things, is people hear yard, and they think that, like, they think a prison movie, and he's like out in the yard. He's on the, there's a roof, there's a hole in the roof with a cage, and he was in there with three other inmates.
He's the only one who got to the top, so, who got it?
He's the only one that escaped or attempted to escape, and that's part of the criminal complaint that was released by the city.
How many people were on staff that night if no one was there and someone watching cameras? How many staff were on duty that night?
I can't speak to that at this time. Next question.
Hi, Jeff. This is in regards to staffing. Do we know, has the jail been employed staff in the base, we're contemplating up, is there a shortage of staff or?
Yes, yes, it has. And so, so just, so as, to clarify, there were eighty-seven people that were in the jail as inmates the night of the escape. We now have ninety, I believe, and our max is one forty. There have been times previous to COVID where we were at one forty on a regular basis, and that really stretched staff pretty thin. Ninety is a good number for us, from my perspective.
Yeah, do you believe going forward, if at the time someone watching the cameras didn't have enough time to get inside and catch this person escaping, do you believe cameras are an effective way of security measures going forward?
That's absolutely something that we're going to review. So everything associated with the, I'm sorry, I hit somebody's mic. Everything associated with the yard and the people inside and how they're observed is going to be reviewed and potentially changed. There are, the only issue that we deal with is, is this mandated that they have to have yard time. So we have to figure out a way to provide that to them in a secure and safe situation.
And then going forward, or, I'm sorry. How many sheets is each prisoner given, and how is he able to collect so many in such a short-term cut?
I've waited for that question, and the truth is, is, again, that's part of the criminal investigation. That's definitely something that we'll discuss once the criminal investigation is completed.
Is there one central location where these cameras are and the guards are there watching? It's not like there are several rooms of cameras?
I think that that's a security question, and I don't know that I feel comfortable answering that. I just know that there are many cameras, and there's many people watching the inmates.
Well, kind of back to the sheets, I mean, it takes a lot of sheets to rappel down the side of a building. We've seen images of this so-called rope. I mean, going forward, are you guys going to be looking to be sure of security and monitoring what inmates have access to or what their stockpile?
Yeah, so obviously, like, our laundry procedures, everything associated with inmates' materials is being reviewed and will potentially change as a result of this situation. You know, because there's any, you know, I mean, now granted, this is something that every prison does on a regular basis, because you have a good number of people who would really love to get out of the facility. So they're constantly trying to figure out ways to maneuver the system. This is one of those things that we'll be definitely looking into and potentially addressing and changing going forward.
Well, and I know one of the other things that was mentioned about, which is that there were signs of extensive amounts of preparation here, whether that was sheets or whether that was other things. I mean, in broad scope here, are there other measures that you guys are looking at taking specifically with monitoring inmates that, you know, someone can't fill up a stockpile or plan out over months on end, how to escape?
Absolutely. I'll go back to the previous answer, which is, every element of their life in the jail is being evaluated and will potentially change policy.
Another clarification, so there was no, there was no staff in that cage with them? They were just being watched on camera?
They were being watched on camera.
Okay. How far away is the staff from where they're located?
I can't, that's part of the investigation. It's also part of our security within the jail, so I can't answer that.
And how is Burham housed? Is he alone, is he with his relatives or others?
I think that's another one that I think that'll come out as the investigation is released.
As county commissioners, what, can you just clarify your role in securing or funding the jail, whatever that entails?
Yeah, so we're in charge of the budget associated with the jail. We're part of the prison board, which is a number of different people, including the DA, the sheriff, the warden that sets policy for the jail. And then, you know, and then also, we have like an HR component where we're responsible for the staff there and monitoring them.
Last time that the budget or conditions or whatever were set, was there anything that could have been taken care of then that could have prevented this that you can recall?
I think that the, in our position- I think that the, in our position, I mean, there's always more that can be done. There is, there's no end to it. You're always trying to operate from a position of fiscal responsibility, and, you know, hindsight's always twenty-twenty. So I will say that we've already discussed and are going to allocate money to expand the security on that roof complex and the deterrents associated with it so that, believe me, no one's ever going to even think to try to climb out of there ever again. In the back?
Can you follow up? Can you clarify how many personnel the jail was short of at the time of the investigation?
There was no shortage of staff, like, they were staffed as they should be, as far, as far as I understand at this time.
Yeah, again, if that's the logistics, what interest staff in one of your budget?
The budget's roughly three, it's over three million dollars. There's generally, I believe, Lisa can, how many, how many do we have total? Is it forty-eight? There are forty-eight guards that are employed by the county. It fluctuates, I try to keep pretty close track of it, but, okay, next question?
Sorry, I just want to make sure that I understand. So you're saying that someone who was watching on camera realized that he was escaping and saw it as it was happening, but was not able to stop it in time? Is that right?
Generally, I would say that's part of the investigation, but I'm trying to think how I would put this. So he escaped before anyone was able to respond to him.
But he was watched.
He was being watched the entire time.
He was being watched and the officer recognized what was happening while it was happening.
That's part of the investigation, so the details of that, I think, will come out as the investigation continues.
Sir, a couple of questions here. What's your message to taxpayers? Because now there's federal resources involved here, literally, every American taxpayer is now footing the bill for this mistake. What's your message to that?
That's a good question. You know, everybody wants to see Michael Burham caught, and I think that's the top priority of everybody involved in this situation. This is an unfortunate situation, but everybody's going to do everything they can to get him into custody and then seek justice for everything that's happened.
And what do you say to folks then? Because you said discipline is required to be kept private, so unless someone's charged, people who could be paying upwards of billions of dollars for this won't even know if someone's punished. What do you say to that?
I think that, again, more will be revealed as time goes on. There's a criminal, there's several criminal investigations associated with this. All of that's going to produce information. Our interest is to be as transparent as we possibly can, that the law allows us to be. So any information that we get the green light to release to the public, we will definitely release so that they can get whatever we're capable of providing.
Sir, on that note, you can tell me that how many staff were on duty that night? The law allows you to tell me that. I can pull.
Yeah.
Those are subject to.
I think that's something that we might release in a future press release.
If, man, when Michael Burham is caught, would you feel comfortable with him returning to the Warren County Jail as they stay right now?
That's not up to me. I think somebody else will make that determination based on the circumstances, and I will trust their judgment, especially at the higher law enforcement level, to put him in the place that he needs to be. Anyone? Eulera?
What's the status of the other three inmates that were with him?
That's part of the ongoing investigation. They're, everybody that's involved in this situation is being questioned by all of the various police agencies that are involved in trying to figure out the situation.
Is this the first successful jail escape in this?
To my knowledge, it is. Certainly, we've had plenty of people who have tried, and none have been successful. You know, at some point, I'll write a book about some of them because they're pretty interesting stories.
How long is the mandate in the exercise? And were there any lag, was it waiting place from?
You'd want to double-check, but I'm pretty sure it's twenty seventeen was when the law was changed because it used to be, and this is, I think, the preconception that everybody has, is you have lockdown, everybody goes to their beds, they're in bed the rest of the night, okay? Because of the size of our facility and the need for them to have yard time, we can't take everybody up into that space at the same time. They have to go in shifts, and so they're taken a little bit at a time, and they're in there all day long in shifts as groups over and over again.
Could any of that be said in what shift did they get to use at the jail or are they assigned to that?
I can't answer that.
What, uh, okay.
Easy one, I promise, just a part of my request. You announced an executive session but didn't give a reason. State law requires that anytime an executive session is held with specific reason be given. What was the reason for that executive session?
I would defer to the, what's?
Personnel is not specific enough per state law. I need to avoid that.
There's pending litigation, there's, and then there's also personnel matters to review.
Related to the program escape?
Related to the operation of the jail.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I do have.
So, okay, we'll go back around. Go ahead.
Just some clarification here. I mean, so you mentioned three inmates in that cage on top of the roof. Eleven twenty at night is pretty late for inmates to be together on a roof unsupervised. Why were they up there so long?
They're up there for quite a while in order to accommodate state law. We have ninety people in the facility. They're going up three or four at a time. If they're up there for an hour, you tell me how long, you know, you have to go in shifts. That's the way it works.
But that way?
It runs almost twenty-four hours a day.
Were there three total plus for him, so I guess four total?
That's in the police complaint from the city, so that, yes, I would suggest reading that.
Well, how long has there been a plan to do some work on the roof? And what was supposed to happen?
We're still working on it. I mean, that's the replacement of the roof itself, like, the, you know, trying to address the age of the roof leak, stuff like that.
So there wasn't a timeframe in place, like, in a month?
It's all, you'd always like it to go faster than it does. Let's put it that way. Anybody? Is everybody, okay, with that, we will close the press conference. I thank you all for your questions. They're all very good, and take care and have a good rest of the day.